Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Saxer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Webster.
Here.
Thank you all for joining us. Now, if you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remove any caps or headdresses you may have. Remain standing thereafter for the invocation given by Pastor of All Saints Lutheran Church, Pastor Rich Bakora.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Your Lord and Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We look around at our world and we see all of the destruction going on in the Ukraine. Then we read in our own newspapers about kidnappings and murders and all of the violence that we have in our own society. And we pray for peace in our world. We pray that there will be reconciliation among folks. And we pray for our own community here. We pray that in all that we do, the things that we do, the way we treat one another, that we will be an example for others, that they will see in this city, through our officials and through the P- our residents, an example of holiness, goodness, and peacefulness. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor. Always a pleasure. We have at least one recognition this evening, a special recognition for Brian Hickey. We'll do in the center of the room and two proclamations. And if Mr. TJ Kestner gets here in time, we'll recognize him as a state champion as well. He's probably out training knowing him. So Brian and Kim, there's Kim Kidwell's in the front row. Come join me in the center of the room if you would, please.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
What's going on?
How are you?
Thanks for being here.
All right. So our golf course maintenance manager, Brian Hickey, our superintendent, is here to receive an award that he's already received, but we're going to recognize him for the great work that he does on behalf of the city. And I'm going to tell you just a little bit about Brian and the work that he's been doing. He is this year's Iowa GCSAA Environmental Stewardship Award winner. He's been at Palmer Hills for the last eight years where he has successfully maintained, protected, and implemented sustainable practices for the natural resources with which he has been charged to manage. Brian's tenure, during that tenure, he has a number of goals that have been established to create the framework that he and his staff have been able to work towards. Great things that are happening here at Palmer Hills Golf Course. He first created a tree maintenance or management program for Palmer Hills so that there will be a strategic approach to tree care, removal, and replacement at the golf course. In addition to his course duties, Brian has chaired the Trees Are Us Committee. All of you are here, or very much of the committee is here today. Thank you very much. For the past two years, he continues to work with the committee to purchase new trees each and every year. And I hope we hear about tree planting on Arbor Day yet before we leave today. Fantastic. In 2008, Brian started the first green program at Palmer Hills. In partnership with the Bettendorf Community School District, 350 eighth-grade students were able to experience on an annual basis the natural outdoor learning laboratory that exists on a golf course. Since 2014, Brian has coordinated golf course improvements that the City of Bettendorf has made as part of our commitment to enhancing and expanding the public golf course offering at Palmer Hills. Working in collaboration with Paul Miller Design, four major golf course improvement projects have been completed over Brian's tenure that improved drainage, infrastructure, irrigation, and practice opportunities. Brian's commitment to public golf has allowed Palmer Hills to become a national model of expanding accessible golf opportunities. The sustainable practices that Brian's established to place the highest value on natural resources that make up the unique character of Palmer Hills Golf Course make him an exceptionally worthy recipient of the Iowa GCSAA 2022 Environmental Stewardship Award. Ladies and gentlemen, Brian Hickey. Brian, if you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this award. Means a lot. The environment means a lot. Being selected by my peers in the Iowa Golf Course Superintendent's Association shows that we're making great strides at Palmer Hills to protecting and enhancing our environment there. Obviously, no one is successful by themselves. So I'd like to thank a few people for helping me along the way. First and foremost, Decker Plain.
He doesn't know any golf.
Steve Grimes, John Waddell. They were part of believing and supporting the vision that we had for Palmer Hills eight years ago when they hired me. The City Council, thank you. You've prioritized the parks, the recreation, and the culture for our community. Jason Manful for his teamwork, collaboration between departments. Liz and Kim Kidwell for their leadership. And then last, my staff, without their dedication and hard work, none of this would have been possible. Thank you.
You're welcome. Another token of appreciation and further recognition of Brian Hickey, Palmer Hills Golf Course Maintenance Manager, the 2022 recipient of the Iowa GCSAA Environmental Stewardship Award, Palmer Hills Golf Course and his commitment to excellence. A little something for that. Well, I don't know where you're going to put it. Last time I visited you for Mayor's Message, I didn't see any manials or anything back there. Put something like this up. But you'll find a spot.
He's asked for expansion, Your Honor.
Let's get together here and we'll get a picture. Step up here, Brian, so you can be seen and we'll hold this as well. Kim, would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Wow, we're shocked.
I just want to say that Brian and his team at the golf course, for me being new to the position about a year ago, a little over a year ago, not knowing a whole lot about golf courses, Brian is just awesome. He and his team take such great care of the golf course. His programs with the middle schoolers are amazing. It's all about the science and he really enjoys that. And he's always sending me like really cool videos of how things are fertilized and mowed. And I watch them thinking, I mean, I'm learning. So I appreciate that. But he, he's passionate about his job and it shows on the golf course. So we appreciate you.
John Waddell as well. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Congratulations, Brian.
Thanks again.
All right, we have an Earth Day proclamation requested, or it will be delivered or provided to Susan Luthhauser. Susan here? Hi, Susan. Come on up. The co-facilitator, facilitator for Environmental Forum, PACG, Progressive Action for the Common Good. Come on up here. And Tom Benj, is Tom here? Come on up, Tom. Thank you both for being here. I have for you a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges affecting every community, and whereas all people of this earth, regardless of race, gender, income, sexual orientation, or national origin, have a right to a healthy environment, and whereas the youth of the world are our most valuable resource and represent a source of endless creativity and potential, and whereas it is necessary for the citizens of our global community to develop green jobs and to build an innovative and equitable green economy to combat global challenges, and whereas expanding environmental education and climate literacy is vital to enhance awareness about the environment and protect future generations, and whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts, now therefore I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2022, as Earth Day in our community. And I encourage all of our citizens, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate and promote environmental and climate literacy. Here. Thank you for being here. Would either of you like to say something? On behalf of the proclamation or Earth Day?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the City Council and the citizens of Bettendorf. It is my pleasure to be here, accepting this proclamation and being a longtime resident of the, of Bettendorf. I'm very proud of this community and this effort in trying to maintain the environment and sustainability of the community. Thank you.
Of course, we've got the Arbor Day proclamation. Come on up. Why don't you just move over here a little bit? So you're here on a good day. Thank you for being here. All right. Bob Sortur, Ron Phillips, and Jason Manful are going to come up for this proclamation, and then we're going to make Bob stick around. Need help getting here, or you got that shovel figured out? Welcome, my friend. Thanks for being here. This is an Arbor Day proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source, source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in our community, and I urge all of our citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. Here. Bob, would you like to say anything about trees?
You don't have that much time.
Nice to see you, my friend. Please.
No, we do, we do have an Arbor Day planting at Grantwood School on the 29th, 9:00. We will be planting three trees there, and I hope some of you can join us.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Take a quick picture, and then we're going to keep you up here. Ron, you want to step up here? Jason, get in here tight. All right. Speaking of trees, the Iowa Urban Tree Council has awarded the City of Bettendorf the Tree City USA and Growth Award at their 31st Annual Community Forestry Award Luncheon, April 12th, 2022. Additionally, Bettendorf's Trees Are Us was selected to receive a grant for $2,000. It looks like you've got a check in your hot little hand. Through Mid-American Energy's Trees Please Program, which supports trees, are us tree planting projects. The Trees Are Us Committee submits their application for these awards and our grants on a yearly basis. Thank you to Bob and Ron and the rest of the committee for your work. I really appreciate all that you have done, and you'll get an opportunity to say a couple words. Here is the certificate for the Tree City USA Growth Award to Bettendorf. Great work. We appreciate that. Robert, come on up. You've got the floor.
No, this is a, we're especially proud of the growth award because that was an award that we started a new trend in planting trees, bare root trees, and doing our own nurseries because of the increased price of trees was astronomical and freight as well. So now Bettendorf is keeping track of those trees, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, and that was part of the growth award that we got.
Thank you for your work. You're going to sign one coming up. Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen. Jason, appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Great to see you. Thank you.
I have to give him the check?
Yeah.
Direct to pot.
At least touched it.
Go to commercial, Your Honor.
Thank you all for coming. For our recognitions and proclamations. The next item on our agenda tonight is our public requests of council. If you'd like to be heard on a topic or item not already on tonight's agenda for public hearing, we'd like to hear from you. You can be heard by approaching the podium in the back. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, Skip. My name is Margarito Albert Saldivar. I live at 2738 State Street in Bettendorf. I've been a lifelong resident of Bettendorf, and so far it's not too bad of a deal. I got a question for all yous up there on the, on the board. Now, if you look across the street from where you live, does it look like a garbage can or does it look nice? Question. Does it look nice and clean?
Skip, you get to address us with your concerns. We understand your point.
Okay, 2135 Mississippi Boulevard. You take a look at the front of that place, and it looks like a dump yard. Now, I know you wouldn't want to have a yard looking like that. Well, the people in that neighborhood are up to here with it. Is there anything that can be done at 2135 Mississippi Boulevard?
Absolutely. We will take a look, and we'll get back with you. We'll send our folks out to make sure that it's within code, and we'll do the best we can to get back to you so that you understand what, if anything, is going to happen.
Okay. I've got one more thing, and then I'll sit down.
You're always welcome here.
I'd like to know why the City of Bettendorf cannot make the streets two-way. Instead of, it doesn't go to a two-way till it goes out to about 28th Street.
You're talking about State and Grand Street?
Yeah.
What a smart man you are. We aren't, we haven't gotten there yet, and it's also very expensive. But we, what I hear you saying instead of a question mark is that you'd like State and Grand to be two-way streets. Am I getting it?
That's correct.
Okay. We have it written down. You've, you've been heard.
Okay, I thank you, and I also like to thank the board over here, the chief police, all you people up here for a fine job you did. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Wonderful to see you. So glad you're up and around. Good job. Anybody else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing? You can be heard by approaching the podium in the back. Please state your name and address. We would like to hear from you. Okay. We'll close public requests of council, and we'll move to a public hearing. This is with regard to the State Transit Assistant Funds for Transit System Operations 2023. Brent Morlock is going to take that. Our city engineer, Brent, thank you.
I will take that. Thank you, Your Honor. This is an annual application that our transit system makes to the state of Iowa to obligate state transit assistant, assistance funds for transit operations. I believe it's a pass-through of federal funds that the state administers and has to be done annually.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council about this item before we open the public hearing? Something we've seen every year. Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written notifications or correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the 2023 State Transit Assistant Funds for Transit System Operations. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? Close the public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Saxer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023 application for state transit assistance funds in the estimated amount of $231,516 to be used by the city's transit system for transit system operations. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion on our transit monies? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed the Transit Monies Resolution. We move to the 2022 Pavement Markings Program. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is our annual street paving program. This is to replace deteriorated markings and symbols that have worn off during the winter, an annual road use program.
Any questions about our pavement markings that we've seen each and every year that you all have been here? All right, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to the Pavement Markings Program. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Saying no, let's close that public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the 2022 Pavements Marking Program. I move approval of this resolution.
Okay.
Any discussion here? Okay. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Okay, we move to another public hearing. This is with regard to the rezoning of property southwest of the intersection of Forest Grove Drive and Chriswell Street. Our community development director, Mark Hunt, gives a quick update, and then we'll start heading in.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, we did do our presentation on this last time we met, so I'll just give you a quick summary. We have a project that is 46 single-family homes on the west side, 19 townhomes, four plexes, one story on the east side. There is a commercial corner that's reserved for development. That commercial is, that commercial corner is denoted in our comprehensive plan as being neighborhood commercial in the future. That's not contemplated for development under this, under this plan. This is a rezoning, so it's a concept plan. The rezoning will be conditional in nature in that we've put together an agreement that specifies that the rezoning must be materially similar to the concept plan as provided and as described in the, in the meetings we've had through PNC and, and prior to this.
Chris, do you feel comfortable on the agreement that we're going to get what has been advertised? I know that's been discussed.
I, I do, Your Honor. Iowa Code does allow a conditional rezoning. The landowner has agreed in writing to, for the development to be in material conformity with the current concept plan in the packet, and I feel comfortable that, that we've got all of those details hammered out to make this a proper conditional zoning.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark or for Chris from council before we open the public hearing? Yes, Councilmember Nauman, please.
Hey, just want to double-check because this has been debated and considered and changed a number of times that, I guess the, the one thing, and I would defer to the Ward Alderman or the at-large folks, the caliber of the single-family homes that we ensure they have a basement and that it's kind of what we expect out of that particular neighborhood, that style, that, you know, environment. So I don't know if that's, we talk about single-family, but it doesn't necessarily, I'm not sure that it defines that to the nth degree, or if we have even oversight over that sort of thing in terms of the caliber of the integrity of the neighborhood, et cetera.
Well, I, I guess I, if I'm, and Mark might want to jump in as well, but.
The developer and his attorney are in the crowd, they can speak.
Our zoning ordinance talks about use when we, when we get to the issue of zoning, and while the, the concept plan is very detailed in nature, the four rows of single-family houses will be single-family detached-style homes similar to the ones that are just to the west of, of, of those four rows, and then the, the single-story townhomes or whatever we're calling those, and Mark might want to elaborate, I believe will be without basements, but that's, I think, a common, so, kind of, of product.
So Code does not allow us to dictate the exact style of a home that is built. It does allow us to create a use and require that use to, to match the zoning districts' bulk standards and things like that, so setbacks and that type of thing. My understanding from the developer and what they've communicated to us is that they'll, they'll sell these lots for development, so the homes will be built as basically custom homes, and they have contemplated basements, but they may not build these homes themselves. They may sell off a number of these lots, and so they could include whatever amenities the builder or the owner of that home requests to be built there, so long as they meet the, the bulk standards of our district. That would be the city's limits to our control, and I guess all the developers speak to themselves on, on plans they have for any of those lots that they may build out.
Go right ahead. Yeah, you can, come on up. Mr. McNamara, state your name so that we know and why you're here to talk.
My name is Chris McNamara, and I'm the developer. And to answer the question with regards to the single family, it has always been intended to build houses, single-family houses similar in standard to Huntington Meadows, which is the development to the west, which would include basements and inequality that you would expect and that you would be proud of. The four, the four plexes would be similar to what the city attorney mentioned, which would be planned to have no basements in the side-by-side ranch condos.
Any other questions of Mark or Chris before we move to the public hearing? Is it a question or you want to discuss it?
It's a question.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Saxer?
My question is, my understanding is this development agreement requires covenants on the properties, and therefore my question is, do we have a process so that the buyers know that they have to renew that covenant after 20 years?
So, yeah, thank you for the question. I, I guess I would just say, there are a couple of things happening here. I mean, the, the city is, or what's been posed to the city council is a rezoning of the property, and that's a decision that council makes. We want to ensure if it is passed, three readings and properly passed, that it's, that it is ultimately done in conformity to the, the agreement and the concept plan. So per the agreement, the plat would have a plat note that would set forth that, that, you know, you would have the four rows of single-family houses. Basically, the restricted covenant is for the grantees of that property to know what they're getting. It's recorded, it's, 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 they, it would be in the abstract. They would know what they're getting. So it's, the covenant is a way for a future property owner to, to know what they're getting. It's also a way for us to ensure that what is being agreed to is done. Typically, single-family homes, you know, they, it's not a site plan that would come to you, so it's going to be in the plat. It's a way to sort of ensure that what is set forth in the agreement takes place. So I, I think on the other issue of, of renewing covenants, and we do see that, you know, that those can expire, that's, it's really not the city's job to do that. We can put a tickler in there, but it's really base, it's, it's for the property owners to, to do that. Once it's built, it's built, though. I mean, not to say that it can't, something else can't be there in the future, but.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chris or for Mark? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
Yes, we did. We received one from Mr. Deutsch, and a copy of the same is at everyone's place.
So you have a copy? It was received March 10th. We will place this into the record relative to this, excuse me, public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing with regard to the rezoning of this property. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item can approach the podium. Please state your name and address. We'd like to hear from you.
Hi, my name's Amy Van Horse. I'm a resident of, well, I'm an owner of 6230 Chriswell Street. So I wrote this letter, and I actually made some copies if you guys would like any of them. But it is to the Bettendorf City Council, so after attending the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on March 15th of 2022, I'm writing this letter to the Bettendorf City Council to request a clear understanding of the things discussed that evening. During that meeting, the contingent plan and rezon- During that meeting, the contingent plan and rezon of the acreage between Forest Grove and Chriswell from an Ag One to an R Three for McNamara LLC were presented to, for the committee's discussion and approved to be sent to the city council. It was clarified that the development plan included single-family homes and single-story zero-entry townhomes. The development showed it would have a carve-out for possible future commercial development, but that was not a part of the process for approval at that time. During the contingent planning and zoning approval, McNamara and their attorney made several verbal commitments about the development, construction, and surrounding properties that were not on the contingent plan. This verbal commitment was these homes and townhomes would be, would it all be in line with a current development in the era, and which I'm referring to is Sterling Woods, Huntington Meadows, and Spencer Hollow. All these additions, according to the city's map, fall into the R One, R Two categories. The current plan for McNamara has this development as an R Three. Our understanding of this difference between R One, R Two, and R Three is being the nineteen single-story zero-entry townhomes planned for this construction. McNamara and their lawyer addressed the ver, addressed verbally some of our concerns. As a working family farm, our family has farmed in this area for generations, so we want these concerns about the development being right next to our working family farm to be addressed now before the final approval, to ensure that they are part of the final plan moving forward. McNamara stated that there would be a two-acre retention pond, which would run as a buffer between our family farm and any houses. We want to ensure that that retention pond is some type of barrier that goes between the entire length of our family property marked by the white posts at the far west end corner of our property. Right now, it appears from the contingent plan that the first street cuts our family farm, I said in half, but as we were just discussing back here, it may be more like three-quarters. Right now, it appears from the contingent plan that the first street cuts our family farm in three-quarters, and the townhome and several single-family homes will be sitting just thirty-five feet with no barrier from our equipment, grain storage, and hay storage. If the pond will not go the length of our property as McNamara stated that evening, then we were hoping there needs to be some type of barrier, like a fence installed, a row of trees. Those are just a couple of ideas. McNamara stated the retention pond would be well-maintained, grass-cut and landscaped, with aeration and movement of water for pest control. A point I made during the planning and zoning contingent meeting was a fully-functioning working family farm. We have grain dryers that run twenty-four hours a day during the season, as well as grain augers that run, and large equipment comes in and out of the property onto Chriswell. We do not plan to change our operations, so we hope our new neighbors will be understanding of our livelihood. We appreciate that McNamara and their lawyer made these verbal commitments respecting our wishes and recognized our family legacy to this area, but we would like these verbal commitments as part of the future final plan moving forward. We were also wondering if we would be receiving any type of final copy or plan of this agreement. Another topic discussed was the sewer for the addition. The Planning and Zoning Committee was told initially addition would be placed on a sewer lift system, which would run from Chriswell to Hopewell. Later, the sewer would, later plans for the sewer, once Chriswell Road was redone in twenty-twenty-four, will be a gravity sewer system, and the lift sewer system would then be abandoned. What impact, if any, would this abandoned lift sewer system have on our family farm and the surrounding farm ground area? And will the city be expecting our family to hook up to the new sewer system, either lift or gravity, and at whose cost are those expectations? Like I said, I have copies of the letter if you wanna introduce it at all, and thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Hunt, do you have any comments? If you, if not, that's fine. We've got, we probably have Amy's contact information. If not, get it today, and you can continue discussions. Some of those points you may want to discuss, others I understand are probably mistaken.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Some interesting points raised, and I, and those were discussed and are on the record in the minutes from our last meeting. The, the, the concept of the pond being the entire length of property, the concept plan that we present is the concept plan that staff feels is what we're gonna hold the developer to. Remember, this is a rezoning. We're kind of getting into site plan a little bit at this point, and really, the, the question before us, is a rezoning based on a concept? That concept may have slight tweaks to it, and we would address those with staff in the future.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor, Council. My name is Greg Jager. I'm an attorney with the Pasternak Firm, representing the owner here this evening. Mr. McNamara has already spoken. I don't wanna take a great deal of time in repeating things. I wanted to say that your council packet does have one drawing in it that seems to show multi-level apartment uses. I'm not sure where that came from. It was in the P and Z packet. It transformed or came into the council packet. It is not our intent to do multi-level townhomes. They are all a single-story, zero-step entry townhomes, and they are attempting to serve that market. There's apparently a very strong market for it. I did wanna take just a moment, Your Honor, to thank staff and the Ward Alderman, Mr. Webster, on this matter. This is actually the third concept plan that has come forward, and over the course of times, we have listened to staff and we have listened to the Ward Alderman, expressed the concerns that the neighbors have raised, and we have tried to address those concerns. What is before you this evening, I think, is a good balance between the, addressing the concerns of the neighbors, between the city's comprehensive plan, which talks about having a diversification of housing and having a, an ability for young people to get their first housing opportunity and stay in the community, as well as address the concerns of the developer to bring forward a successful development. So I think this, this concept plan really addresses all three of those things, and I wanted to thank staff and Mr. Webster specifically for helping us get to that point. We are available to talk to any, if there are any questions or concerns. The issue of the agricultural noise and the drying of grain, we understand, and we will make sure that the tenants of the properties in that area understand it as well. It'll be fairly obvious at certain parts of the year. Anyway, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Jager. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then we'll move to the ordinance. This is the first reading of three. Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map for property generally located southwest of the intersection of Forest Grove Drive and Chriswell Street. A One Agricultural Urban Reserve District to R Three Mixed Residential District. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion from council? Councilmember Webster, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll, I'll agree with the counselor. It's been a little bit of a battle trying to figure out what compromise some of the neighbors could have with this, and I think they're probably, and talking to them would be that they're not thrilled, but they're not upset. At, at least the nearby neighboring neighbors there did have an opportunity to meet with them and go through it. I think the power of this is compromise, and I think that's where they're at, and I think that's where the developers came to. And I understand the concern of the people to the south with a, a working farm, so hopefully work through as much of that as you can, because obviously dumping undue amounts of water or anything on them will be a concern to a family farm and trying to operate. So I wanna thank the neighbors and the developer and everybody that I've talked to through this, because I think originally it was very tough for me personally to support any of it. I think it's got to the point where it's a good compromise. I think it will be a good thing in the end, and it has been a big compromise for the developer and a big compromise for the, the homebuyers or owners nearby. So I wanna thank you guys, the neighbors, and all the staff members who went through trying to get a compromise that was working. I know staff did a lot of work on this, too, so I'm supportive of it at this point in time with the compromise from each party.
Further discussion? Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
We have to pass the first reading of the ordinance. It'll come back for two more, rezoning the property at the intersection, southwest intersection of Forest Grove and Chriswell. We move to our next public hearing. This is with regard to a planned unit development at twelve-hundred Devil's Glen Road. Mr. Hunt, would you give us a quick update?
Yeah, Mayor, be glad to. Again, we, we had a formal presentation on this last time we met. This is the, the property in Devil's Glen Road, right near the creek or the bridge.
Right.
It has a green barn on it. There used to be a green home as well that burned down. It has been put up for sale, and as we started investigating this property, we came to realize there's a planned unit development that was established in nineteen seventy, I'm gonna say, two. I know it's before nineteen seventy-three, because that's when I was born. That unit was never developed, that PUD was never developed, and by our code, if it's not developed within two years, it essentially becomes defunct, and so to clean this property up is, from a zoning perspective, staff's recommendation is that PUD be officially revoked by this council and the property returned to an R One status. This has no bearing on other future development. This is not something that's brought by a petitioner. This is brought by us as staff to the city to help clean up our zoning map.
Understood. Any questions for Mr. Hunt? Michelle, would you please? Well, let me talk to you first about a public hearing.
Yes.
Did we publish notice about that public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to twelve-hundred Devil's Glen Road. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this item? All right, let's close the public hearing and move to the ordinance. This is for a first reading, Councilmember Nauman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have the first reading of an ordinance revoking the existing Duck Creek Development Planned Unit Development Plan, amending the Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map by reverting the zone district classification to R One, Single Family Residence District for twelve-hundred Devil's Glen Road. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing done. Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed the first reading of that ordinance. We have another public hearing. This is with regard to some regulations about open space on lots, fences, and walls. Mr. Hunt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, we did have a presentation on this last time we met. What we have here is basically an updating of our city ordinance to follow what we're seeing in practice through our Board of Adjustment, variances that are being granted. So on-through lots in Bettendorf, that's a double-fronted lot where there's a front yard on both sides. Imagine Fifty-third Street where you have a front yard at the Fifty-third Street edge, and then you have a front yard at the street to the south or the north is the case, maybe. Those are double-fronted lots, and when we have those lots, we have had numerous occasions where people have sought variances to put a fence of a certain height, six-foot height, in their front yard on the busier roadside to help with traffic and light and sound and vibration and that type of thing. As staff, instead of continuing to go through the ordinance, we did have a, go through the amendment process, the variance process, we did have a petitioner come forward and modify some text or, or suggest a text modification. We're bringing that to you to basically enact what, to us, is kind of a simple solution, allowing these fences on these busier roads where they're double-fronted to, to block that light and sound.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Saxer.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I would like to reiterate my concern from last night that we have a standard.
Why don't we do that? If, if you have a question for him, that's great. We're gonna have a discussion when we get to the ordinance. Any questions? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the fences, walls, and open space on lots discussion we just had. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, let's close the public hearing and move to the ordinance. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending Section eleven dash eleven B dash twelve L subchapter, Supplemental Development Regulations, Open Space, Space of Lots, Fences, and Walls. I move approval of the ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance of first reading.
Second.
All right, Jerry, what did you want to say? Mr. Saxer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to reiterate my concern that we have a standard for appearance since we are putting, allowing these fences to be put up along major roads. So my question is, has staff had a chance to give any additional consideration to a, a standard? You know, specifically, I would like to not allow chain-link fences along these major roads, you know? It makes it look like an institution, and this, we're a premier city, we specify materials for sewer pipes, which are buried and nobody sees. I think we could specify materials for these fences, which everybody's gonna see.
Counselor Curran, would you like to address that?
Well, I, I guess, I think I would just like to say, I think that requires some more consideration, some more research. I, I believe that it's separate and apart from the ordinance at hand, and maybe it brings it to mind because we're talking about fences and front yards, but I think that that's something that Mark's staff needs to take a hard look at. I, I, I think that that, you know, I certainly understand Mr. Saxer's perspective, but I just think it requires some analysis, and, and it's, to my, in my opinion, it's separate from, from what we're doing here with this ordinance.
Okay. Councilmember Connors.
Uh, I have a black chain-link fence in my yard. Reason I have chain-link fence is I want to keep the feeling of the neighborhood. It keeps the dogs in. Some people, my neighbors to the west of me, have a six-foot privacy fence out of wood. They have a pool, and they do a lot of entertaining in the backyard. They don't want everybody watching what they do. I think that's a slippery slope if we start requiring people to do certain things, paint their house a certain color, put a, one certain type of fence up. I, I don't agree with that. I respect you, Alderman Saxer, but I disagree with you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Webster.
I have a question slash, slash, discussion. I talked to Mark a little bit last night on this. We're requiring a tree or a bush to go in, in between the fence and the easement, so I guess my question, as I thought more about it, do we have a standard? Because those, you can plant something there that becomes very large, and then you can't see the corner. So forcing them to put a tree in an area that's already gonna be limited with view could become even more limited. Do we have a method, and I don't know, that's why I ask, to tell those people they have to trim that back or keep that trimmed back because of sightlines? And is it right to tell them they have to put in a tree, and now you have to trim it because you can't see around? That's the part where I think this, I don't think we're going so far that it makes it dangerous, but if you put a evergreen in there that gets fifteen feet wide, you can see when it's little, but when it gets big, you're not gonna be able to see. That's, that's my major concern with this is sightlines.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, your concern is shared by staff, and public safety is paramount, so whenever we're locating these things, we, we do do analysis for the vision triangle. We have a thirty or thirty-five-foot vision triangle by ordinance, and you're right, there is a potential that something could enter that vision triangle if it grows too large, but that happens throughout the city, and we do monitor for that. We do, as code enforcement that works for my department, do monitor those, respond to those calls, or when we see them ourselves. We also have the ability to, as we're working with the property owners through the, the plot plan or the building permit process, to suggest certain types of vegetation and the location of those vegetation can be manipulated to avoid those, those occurrences, and I think, you know, we have a good staff that would be able to help do that. But yeah, I share your concerns that we don't create a safety issue, and I think we'll be diligent and not do that.
So you're gonna leave the requirement for a, a tree in there, though?
I think it should stay. That, that, that requirement really was part of, in the packet, part of the comments and discussion that came from both Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustment was to avoid what they call the tunnel effect, driving down a road where there's nothing but fences on each side of you can create a tunnel effect, maybe not that attractive, and having that, that 12-foot barrier and the greenery will help resolve that.
Your Honor, if I could add to that, we do have a, a tree planting guide in our city code, and there is a, as Mark said, a 30-foot restriction, so no plantings or any obstructions are allowed within that vision triangle.
Is, is that getting updated? Is that inside the subdivision ordinance, or what ordinance is that inside of?
I think it's a public ways.
Okay, because I, I think our sightlines are, we've said a lot of things have passed on a sightline, and then you go there and it's like, I can't figure out how this is that easy.
A lot of times, I'm guessing it's just simply people were doing it without staff's knowledge. You know, we ran into that on Hopewell, for example, and we've taken some trees down and have some additional ones that need to come out.
Yeah.
I think the landscape ordinance also addresses some of those concerns as well.
If you guys feel like you've met it, that's my only concern, so I'm good. I just want to note it.
Understandable.
That would be a concern. Any other discussion? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll on this first reading.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
No.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.